Alrighty. It is ten o'clock, so we will open our morning workshop of Pucktack County Board of Commissioners. We will start with a public works update of Public Works Director Jeff Hunter and County Engineer Seth Spur.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. First thing is a concurrence to award to Knife River Corporation for our federally funded curve warning signs and guidepost improvement project. On Clickitat Appleton Road, this is complete hundred percent federally funded. Um, we also have executive contracts and bonds or executed contracts and bonds versus pick striping for white. Plastic edge lines, again, another federally funded safety project. Um, Washington State Department of Transportation supplement, this is for our paving project in Bickleton area, another federally funded project. Uh, we actually got that due to our good delivery of other projects. Uh, and then we also have the perspective, which is part that feds like to have two sets of paperwork with every pro every step of the way. So with that, oh, and we have a couple of pay estimates, one to uh, Winthrow. For uh, nine thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, that is for the curb and gutter along Annex One or Annex One used to be. And the second one is to overhead door of Yakima on a total of two hundred and or two hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
I thought we were doing a run curb and gutter.
No, we don't have a machine.
That's right.
And we are, we're doing the side.
Doing the sidewalk, but we don't have the machines for the gutter.
Yes, it's, they actually didn't use the machine, but they have twelve guys. I don't have twelve.
And it seems like it was a pretty good bid compared to.
It was a very good bid.
Yeah.
Very good bid. Um, we don't usually see that, and the reason was if we fit the window and they could knock it out in one day.
With twelve guys, they knocked it all out in one day.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we don't have that capacity. And with the curb and gutter, it takes a long, you know, it's a lot of finishing work, so they came in, yep, and they were done. Couple hours it was.
And didn't even use the machine.
No, didn't even use the machine. Um, and then we have the overhead door, which we've talked about, that was for that east side door, twenty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. And uh, to that, I'll turn it over to Seth to discuss a little bit of construction and design.
So construction, we started work on the bridge painter in Rock Creek this weekend, and the first coat of paint actually goes on today. This should be done really quick, actually. They're working through it pretty quickly. White plastic edge lines contracted bonds, as Jeff said, is on the consent agenda this afternoon. Um. Third warning signs and guideposts, we're sending the bonds and contract to the contractor this week, so we can hopefully get that started here shortly. And we continue to do our annual traffic and counts between other projects. On the design and the curb warning signs and guideposts concurrent is concurrence to award is on the consent agenda this afternoon. Uh, the Bickleton area paving project, again, we got two items on the consent agenda, that is to. Set the construction funding and the plans and specifications will be reviewed internally this week. Sundale Old Highway Eight, right away getting runway negotiations are going to begin this week. Uh, bridge repair bundles, the funding documentation went to Wash Dot last week for approval. And the small works guarder contract to to add the guard rail and canyon road. And repair the bird post on Dot Road will go to add tomorrow bids will be due the thirteenth of September. And preliminary work continues on other projects and we're supporting the road crew as they do their projects in the Bickleton area.
Okay, um, I have something that isn't on here. We have a guest. It's the HR Director. Think he goes without, I shouldn't have to name him.
Rose between two thorns.
Maybe not.
Um, so you assigned Director Quinn to the classification committee to review. Um, the classification placement in the wage um, plan for the new deputy director facilities. Uh, we met, um, Director Quinn and Director Hunter and I individually scored, went through the process. And all agreed that it should be placed at pay grade seventy-four. So we would. Present that to you as our recommendation for placement of that new position on the pay scale.
What's your goal for the position we're experiencing? Is this reclassifying and not filling what's currently there, or are you moving somebody else up in it?
I'm moving somebody else, not, I'm moving somebody else in, not, not hiring any more people. So he will take on some of the duties that I used to do on the facility side. And still do the duties that he does normally. So one of the main duties that he's going to do is we looking to save money. I mean, everybody's looking to save money, but. And so he's going to re, one of his biggest tasks is going to be to analyze our utility bills. And try to, and that, that's a very cumbersome thing to do. There's a big program and all this other stuff, and him and I are really the only ones that can do that, we're the only ones that have had that training to do. Something of that magnitude.
You might recall that the previous deputy director was off of the wage scale and on a contract, and this puts this. New deputy position in the pay scale consistent with uh. Some managers and some of the department directors, um, based on their responsibilities outlined in the job description.
Where does this fit in your? When you came to us. Seven, eight months ago with what you wanted to see, is this fit into that, or did you tweak that to make this?
This fits into that, the only difference though is, is that I had better thought change when we brought you that. We were going to um, actually hire another position to backfill his position, but we're not going to do that. We're not going to do that. Seth is going to step up and take, you know, all the stuff on the roadside. And Milleran takes the stuff on the facility side. That's how it works.
So the current position, so we're adding more duties that you used to do, um, what was the current, was it seventy-two before?
Um, I don't, or the current person is, or?
I think he was seventy-two.
I think so.
Okay, so it's a two-step.
I think it's not based on the persons, based on the job.
Right, but it's the position is ta, that that box is taking on additional duties and deserves to be compensated.
More sharing that with the broader public. Do you need to think about it?
Are you asking for something?
It's a recommendation, we can't proceed.
Well, you told us about your survey, but you didn't ask.
I'm just visiting with you.
I was waiting for the ask.
I'll make relief. It's our recommendation again.
Recommendation?
Is that this position be placed at. A grade seventy-four on the Clickitack County Pay Plan.
We'd move uh, forward with the reclassification, and I want to see the job duties and have it on the consent agenda for that.
Tough room today.
Tough room, this is as easy as you get.
And and with that, we will redo our org chart. Because we have to redo our org chart, we have to change names. We're required by legislature to change some of the names of our.
Positions.
Positions.
What we want to see.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to maintenance, uh, West Market Street is scheduled to be uh, B S T next week. Will not affect the car show this week because the east, east market street was the one that the car show really is involved with. Uh, West End Bickleton Highway reconstruction continues. On the facility side, sidewalks and ramps will be complete this week. Um, HVAC units are done. We just have to finish the sheet rock installation, and then we just have. Uh, just a couple more odds and ends, and we are done with three oh seven. Three oh seven will be finished. Um, Pioneer Center still scheduled for the third week of September, jail roof has started, the construction has started, started Monday, they delivered everything. Today they should be putting up their scathling unit. Putting a fence around their uh, area. Courtroom, we're still uh, waiting to hear back from the granting agency, I haven't had a chance to pastor them yet. Um, events, there's nothing scheduled at the fairgrounds until the four H adult camp, which is at the end of September. Uh, view island still in the same uh, radio site, um, the grounding of the halo is going to be done inside, or that's inside that's done this week. We met yesterday with uh, emergency management. With the fire chief from Merle Seven and with D N R and talked about a potential for grounding out there. Came to the agreement, we would look at weather, watch I P L hopefully drop to level one. Um, so the latest we would do it be October fifteenth or October sixteenth, because that's when they thought. But we would also look at doing it sooner depending upon the weather. And that is the main thing we're waiting for to bring that site online. It'll be to ground it, then we hook up all the equipment because the equipment's not hooked up. It's all sitting in there though. So the cabin's all done and everything's ready to go. Okay, some follow-up issues, the compressor has been replaced and dispatched, so they have cooling again. We did get the no parking signs for Annex Seven, we will install those this week. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the white salmon meeting room. Uh. For years wasn't my, and I was against it, so Hannah's had it as a separate office. She's used it twice in five or six years, however long. We are training for Kim's replacement, and we would like, we, we don't need the meeting room, but we need a meeting room. So we're in a closet, I've got two people in an area that is really small. Again, that I'm okay with that, but sorry.
Um, I meant to print my seatmates out and email that I sent to Hannah this weekend. Um, this morning, and with all my other meetings I've had this morning, I haven't had time. Uh, but I did email Hannah, filling her in on the budget. Um, asking her to vacate the white salmon office space she's currently using. Um, that we plan on turning it into some kind of a conference room, meeting room. Um, and then advising her of the long-term potential of coroner in the building here. Um, and uh, I will have somebody print out. Um, did I send it to you?
You sent it to me, I actually followed it.
Oh, so do you, you've seen it, okay, good enough.
Okay, thank you, because, you know, I'm not asking for office space, I just, if it's a conference room, because.
We need some kind of a conference room down there that can people can check out and use on a daily basis like our rooms here.
Because we're limited in the conference rooms we have now.
We do have two conference rooms that you can't check out.
Yes, the one's pretty good size and they get used quite a bit. So, and we need to, you know, use one, so I appreciate that, thank you, I, you know, if she needs help, we'll move her out or whatever. But that helps us. I have one more thing.
How did you come by your numbers saying that she's only used it twice in five years? Is that when the code gets ran on the door?
Yeah, we can, we can check, that's what I heard, I've not run the goat, but that's what my people that work down there said they've seen her.
If you could run the code, that would be. Because.
Use the code if it's before office hours, if you come through the main door.
Right.
Okay.
But we can check and see.
So not a totally accurate, got it.
Right, it won't be totally, yeah.
Which that brings up the second thing, if we do sometime in the next. Period of time need that W S U space downstairs for a coroner's office, we're going to have to move W S U back out to the fairgrounds. It's my understanding that walls that were there are not there anymore or something, whatever, do we have a space out there? Or would we need to do some kind of construction out there to supply a space?
I don't know why we'd have to construct out.
Okay.
Uh. It's an off, it's always been their space, it's technically, it's the county's stuff, but. We're a source of it.
Right.
Years ago, somebody, the previous W S U person wrote a grant. And said, well, I got the grant, so that's my space. Okay, like, if that's how it works, they're all my spaces, because I wrote the grants for all those spaces. But anyway, so they claim that W S U, that part of exhibit building, so it's been called the W S U. So you could do it if, you know, I don't think we have any more of the temporary things, but I don't see why you'd have to.
So technically, we could, we could make that happen at a fairly.
Yeah, we could move.
Quick in and.
Very cost efficient.
Good.
There's a unit in there, there's already, there's a two-way locking door that goes from there to the middle room. That very few people have a key to, so you can't go, so people in the middle exhibit room, when they rent that, can't go into W S U's room.
Okay.
So there's, there's a way.
Jeff, did you have any ideas on other places for a corner to possibly go?
And we can look at some other pot potential areas, do they have to be, you want them to go?
I'd love them in that building over there and not in this building personally.
We can look around, we can look around for options. You know, I, I first thought a good place. Would be. I gotta get the sheriffs out, would be where the deputies sit. Downstairs, because then they have in and out. They have their own door.
Because don't the deputies have somewhere new to?
Yeah, we built them a space in the old uh. The old uh. Dispatch. So we remodeled the old dispatch to put them in there, because the idea was not to have a state base. But I think only one runs it, I don't want to get the sideways sheriff's side.
Right.
But that would be my suggestion, because you could get them, you know, then the person can come and go.
And it's not in the public eye, I mean, the corner.
Exactly. Because the county.
Do we know are the deputies still using that room?
I gotta check, I don't know if they are.
Okay.
Because that would be my idea, uh, that would be my suggestion, the counties I worked in in the past, because I've kept it kind of aside. It's not like, you know. People need to go see them. They usually, you know, are on site.
Not going to respond with any more of the jokes on that.
Right. I was giving you.
Too easy, it's not fun if it's too easy.
Thank you, sir.
A little show and tell will make this quick. Um. So we talked about, you had asked about parks. And so what we did is, is these are parks that the county has, some of them are kind of surprised to me. And a lot of them we don't maintain. But we had a new, a new rush on, we'd like to get stuff done at parks. And Mr. Zoller would probably be more familiar than anybody, because most of them are fur here. But okay, we have the Trout Lake Park, which is eighteen point six six acres, everybody's familiar with that one. We have the Convoy Park and Fine Vista, which most people are not familiar with, which is in Glenwood, and that would be page two of your. Each one of these is.
What, what do we have inside that park? Do we have benches or anything?
We have, we have a picnic table, we have light, we have a, and we have, used to have a faucet, but I don't think I keep it, we don't keep it on. We, it's very minimal, but we just got hit up this year that they would like to have. Us do something to improve it. There's a park in Glenwood, but it's owned privately, it's not. There's that park right in town.
Oh, yeah.
That's owned by. The neighbors. So we have that one. And then the third one is. The Steelhead Park or Wild Park. Yeah. Wild River Park. Which is six point five acres. Which is this one right here, which we don't do a lot of, but we, we have a facility there.
Isn't most of the parking on the parcel to the west?
Yeah, most of these, a lot of these are parks, you are correct. Um, the skip real quick to, then we got the Dallas Ford. And that's that five acre tract that we have over there that we, you know, that is part, it was heated with, a lot of these were heated with developments. That one was heated with a development. Now we go to Clickitat, now there's some, there's some confusion about the Clickitat, this is the Mill Site, but if you go to that, that is one parcel. Um, it's an easy thing to fix. And when people ask me, I tell them Mill Site is not considered a park, only that's considered a park is Little Miss. Even though they are, they are only one parcel.
How big is that parcel right here, the little one?
I'm not sure, to be honest, it's not very big.
It's tiny.
It's tiny, we got it years ago, it used to be a train stop. And B N S F wanted to give it to Wash Dot, they didn't want it, so somehow or another the county took it, that's, I don't remember how many years ago, Lori might be a better.
And Clickitat loves that they've got a swing set there and the caboose is there, so they hold some events over there.
Yes, yeah, we mow it on a regular basis and we do it, so yes. You, you do contribute to that part. Uh, Steelhead Park, I was not very familiar with this. And that's the one out here.
About one. It's about one point two acres.
Yeah, it's not very big, it's all that.
Yeah.
Steelhead Park's not very big, it's about three acres, it's mainly used for parking, we got it as part of the development. There's a, there's a short flat or a flat that went in there and they deeded that, the county years ago. And I'm not familiar with it, I gotta get back to Commissioner Zoller, he's probably more familiar with it than I am. We don't do anything here.
And it, it used to be the main boat ramp, and then the river changed and its main flows on the other side, so you can launch kayaks there and stuff now, but. I don't see picnickers there, inner, inner tubers.
Where was the bow ramp at?
It was right uh, as you head for the bridge there, the flat bridge, it's on the left-hand side. And it was an undeveloped boat ramp, it was just gravel, but everybody used to use it for years until I believe after the ninety-six flood.
That's what I heard. Yeah, so it's still, these, what I put on here are stuff that the county that we actually call the parks, if you look them up, they are listed as part property. Um, there are other, there are other parcels in the county that we own that we do not consider, that are not listed part property. That Public Works has been approached to actually put into part property, but we always know that's an act, that's the board's act, not our act. One of those parcels is the one in Clickitat, the one that they use as a boat launch. That county got that uh, for flood mitigation after the ninety-six flood. They've asked to put a boat launch there. That's about two years, yet that's not a part parcel today. I'm not advocating that it is, I'm just giving you the board, so then of course we have Wish Ramp, which we do maintain, and we're doing some improvements there of issue. That's, that's the parts, again, it's more of a kind of letting everybody know where we are. Um, if there's any questions, I'll leave you with these and.
So I always knew about this part of the Wish Ramp, what of this, these pieces, what's going on there?
We have the upper pieces, that's where the basketball court is.
Okay. That's what I think.
Yeah, playground up there too, but uh, playground.
Yeah, there's a playground equipment, yes. Um.
That's the one where the tree fell over on the playground equipment.
That is correct.
And the lower one is just the caboose essentially, anything down there as far as other than picnic table? And a porta potty?
No, that's pretty much it, uh, picnic tables, they've asked to have us put flags up there, again, I'm given board history, so they're aware. Um, we used to have flags there, we used to have somebody that lived right next to it that took care of the park. Um, and they broached, they've asked me a couple different times about putting flags up there. I've told them, I'm sorry, I don't have the staff to send down there every time the flag, you know, because it used to be. The, the flags never got lowered to half-staff unless it was, you know, a significant event, death of a president or something like that, but now we go up and down all the time. And I don't have anybody there, getting lights on them is pretty easy, but it's going up and down that they do, and I told them, I can't do anything, I can't send somebody down there to raise and lower the flags all the time. So that's why the flags are there. They do have flag poles there, but.
Have we talked to the community council about if they want to take it on?
Yeah, I've talked to them about that, and they're like, well, no, we can get somebody that you could hire to take it on. I'm like, okay, that kind of defeats the purpose for me. Um, but I've had that discussion with them, you know, if you want the flags, if somebody will step up and say, I'll raise and lower them, I'll put the flags back there. But I get to say, well, you know, we could find somebody to volunteer if you'll pay them, I said, okay, that's not volunteering, that's me paying them. Uh, and when they bring it up, I always tell them the same thing, and I'll continue to tell them the same thing, that if they find somebody, we'll try putting the flags back. Because we do have lights for them, so it isn't, it isn't a night thing, it's, it's a raise and lower thing.
Any questions?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
I will add it to my file.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Steph, thank you for letting him get a word in edgewise today.
Oh, I'm sure it won't, I had, I was trying. But I did give you a three. You want, you want to picture the park, I'll leave you some.
Thanks.
There you go, precious.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning, before you go, I'm going to check in the back of the room, we have fair board people here, and are we here for a reason, or?
Oh, we can share the numbers of the fair with.
If you have, you have two minutes before we have to move on, can you do it in two minutes?
Do it in two minutes.
Okay, go. I didn't want to make you sit here because we have him for a half hour in the mid prosecutor and, and so I don't see where I can squeeze you in.
Two matters. Didn't get on the agendas, I'm at your own will.
He's very tight morning scheduled today.
So, share the stats from the fair. This is unedited, so it's. Financials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, basically, uh. As you see, our numbers were up on Thursday, all we do on Thursday is count bodies. Uh, Friday was about even, Saturday was down. From last year, if you look two years ago, I mean, we're still. Up. But not from last year, which surprised me because I thought we were pretty packed.
Let's say total, looking at the total, it's kind of from forty-five to forty-three to thirty-nine. Like we're dropping year over year.
Well, we're not, because if you go back to twenty-one, we only sold three hundred and fifty-two passes. Because we didn't charge for Thursday and Friday. So what we do is take the passes and multiply by four for the state numbers.
That makes sense.
Yeah, plus we don't, do not put uh, our exhibitors in here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have a lot more exhibitors this year, it seemed like.
Yes, yeah, our beef was up, our swine was up, we had a lot more numbers, so, and I didn't have that in here. Uh. So the numbers kind of skew, like you said, if you just look at how many people came for the day. But we multiply the passes by four, and passes were about the same as last year. I thought Sunday would be down. But it actually was about the same as last year, I thought with the smoke, uh, we'd be down. But so Saturday was down about four hundred. Uh, some people. Passes were the same, I know Lori, you had asked us during the fair, where are we at with the numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to touch base with that.
That's good.
Perfect.
No, it seemed very busy.
And then the other item, if I may quickly, and you don't have to answer, uh, last week you had mentioned about. Putting our bid on hold for our building. And I. Want to stress, we're at the nth deadline of getting this building out for bid. To have the building built for next year. The contractor I talked to said twelve months, well, we're right at the nth of twelve months, I think. Depending on supply chain, I think we're okay with eight, nine months to get this bid out. And I just bring it up because this is very vital.
The reason I asked was, has, has the fair board ever met with the county commissioner, sat down, had a workshop on? Uh, where the county wants to go with improvements to the fair and where the county wants to go in use of the duly funds?
When we started this process four years ago, and invited the commissioners to be involved in the process.
For that bar?
Yeah, for the long-range planning.
And you've updated us multiple times since then.
Multiple times.
And you've worked very hard on this.
Oh, yeah, we have, I, uh, we did have a fair evaluator here, and then we're going to start evaluating this yearly. And he did ask if we had future plans. You know, we mentioned, yeah, a building, because he. You know, we mentioned, yeah, a building, because he said, I don't know if you had seen where the goats were. He said that was real inadequate, the goats weren't inside.
I guess I, my, the reason I bring it up is. Um because there's fair improvements like roofs that are gonna have to be redone, that. I guess my worry is that we spend a bunch of duly money and then. Public works comes forward and tries to get the commissioners to pay for a half a million dollars for a roof, but we don't have any money for it because we spent the money somewhere else. So.
I'm not disagreeing, I, I, I wish we were having this conversation a year ago.
Right, and for me, I'd like to clarify that with the fair board and with the public that we are a board of three. And for one commissioner to make a statement that there's concerns, that would have to come back to the board for a longer, bigger discussion. Rather than you worry about because of a statement that your whole project after four years might go south. And I would like to just caution that we need to have a bigger discussion before we ever think about suggesting something like that. It should have been between the board.
And I would, and I would say is, is that the, the fair board has been working on this project to build this building for a very long time. That we're going out for bid, if we want to go a different direction, I'd still say we go out for bid and we get the bids. Because we don't know what the bids are gonna come back, and so the best thing we can do now is go out and get the bid so that if we do pull that trigger. Uh with as an agreement between the, the commissioners and the fair board and, and all the other users that. That at least we have the knowledge of what it's actually gonna cost.
I, I appreciate it, I'm gonna try to get, I do have a bid in hand. Try to get it on the agenda within a week or next two weeks to call for bids. I'm sure we'd be more than happy to have discussions, you know, I do agree, we need to sit down and have a discussion. What other things need to be improved at the facility, like.
Well, that's me, I mean, I guess for me, I'm, I'm wrapping up because we're kind of short on time.
Yeah.
But I've been sitting here for two and a half years and have yet to been brought into a discussion on. Where the commissioners want to go in, in long range planning of the fair and how those duly funds are spent. Uh so maybe it was private discussions with commissioners that are maybe no longer here anymore. Um but um yeah, for me to sign something, I actually have to actually. Know something about it and or be involved in it, and so if we're going out to bid, we're going out to bid, that's fine, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just, I, I think there needs to be, and I've been saying this for three months, we need to have a sit down with all the user groups. Uh and, and technically I said this, they're back in July, so it's not a new development. Um and I still think we need to have that discussion and, and sit down and go through that, so um yeah.
No, I appreciate it, and I'm not trying to stop it from doing, don't, don't misunderstand, and we will be happy to be involved with.
But we do have a long term capital improvement plan for the fair.
Yes, we, the fair board has came up with our long term capital. And I think that takes further discussion.
Well, that's kind of where I'm coming from, because the fair board, the way I look at the duly funds and the way I read the duly fund memo is the duly funds. Are the counties to spend, they're not fair boards to spend.
We'll have to agree, disagree on that one.
Legal interpretation from our prosecutor. Um is, it's a county facility, they were given to the county for use of the fair, for use of improvements at the fair. So I, that's the whole point of we need to have a discussion, so we're all on the same page.
The fair board has been spending those funds last seven years for improvements.
Don't disagree.
Anyhow.
So closing, closing that, Commissioner Christopher's been asking to, to get a sit down meeting and so I would ask that uh the. Uh clerk get the fair board and any other user groups in for a discussion because that's, that is the direction Commissioner Christopher is asking. And if we can get that in the next month, that would be great. Would that agree? Commissioner Christopher?
Thank you for your time for squeezing me in, sorry to take more than two minutes.
Thanks, sir. Already still five year minutes, sir.
And that concludes our report.
You're not getting out.
So we started with six department updates, down to was three and now it's two. I'll email you George's update um on current statistics for code compliance. And since I've asked Joe to delay his trip out to, to the landfill, I thought I would start off with um with solid waste. So I'm gonna have McKenzie's back, as you know, full time and um. Um has got the grant in hand and is putting together her plans to make this program her own, so I've asked her to. Um sit down and visit with you a little bit about the three major deliverables and, and at least her thoughts going forward.
All right, um so there's three tasks, of course, with the grant, which you guys probably know if you've looked it over at all. Um there's the residential recycling, which is where the most money is, and that's mainly the education outreach portion. So like I, I was at the fair, I had a booth there, I was there eight hours a day, talking to people about recycling and a little bit about the composting. Um so that's part of it, I did the Water Jam event back in June, I don't think I've seen you guys since then, and that was really successful and a really fun, cool event. And kids got to take home some information to their parents about the recycling as well.
Do you know what that event is?
Um and then the next part of the, the grant is the organics portion, um so we're required in the grant. That um we do some composting workshops that are free of cost to county residents, so I'm looking, I'm hopefully gonna contract out for that. Um with the grant money and have that started in October, weather permitting. And then the next one is just the special collection and the um. The, the waste, that's the moderate waste, that's the moderate hazard waste. And so working with Republic, of course, to offer the collection and then doing collection events for. With special contractors, like there's one we use for like paint collection in town and give people opportunity to bring that in town instead of having to go all the way to the landfill. So that's just kind of the basic, I have some projects that are kind of passion projects in mind that fall under some, mainly the residential recycling category. Um I still need to contact the grant manager to talk and see if they fall enough into that category to get paid for. And some of them are kind of big projects that are, I'm gonna have to research a lot, um. And so we can talk about them a little bit today if you want, but they haven't been like approved for the funding yet, but I do have ideas, and so. Hopefully next time she'll have given me the green light and I can say, yes, we're doing this.
While we're speaking of that, Michelle's been. Former person's position now as the grant manager for colleges, extremely helpful with McKenzie. They talk on a regular basis and uh.
Yep.
So I think Michelle is passionate about all of the counties of her, her responsible area, but. This is kind of her baby year, so uh she's been very, very good to work with McKenzie, been a good resource.
What are the other programs that you wanna try to start up?
Well, they're really just projects, they're not full, I guess. For the waste reduction, I wanna look at doing water bottle fill stations in the counties where there aren't. And I know that's kind of a big tackle because there's a lot of, if it's at a park, then that involves Parks and Rec City potentially, so like that is, that's a huge undertaking. And I wanna start that, but I wanna make sure it's funded before I get too deep into it. Um and I also, I'm hoping to do maybe working with the chamber because they've been doing the murals around town. If we can do like a recycling mural somewhere downtown and Republic might want to be in on that too, I haven't asked them yet, we could get their logo on it as well. Um just to unify and education. And then I'm at Water Jam, I met some of the teachers, two of these kids that come to Water Jam and some of them I gave my information to. And they want me to come in the spring and do some teaching in classroom as well.
With the composting, have we contracted that out in the past or did we usually do it ourselves?
Uh Michelle had, there was a contract with um a gentleman named Peter, he, I actually contracted him for Water Jam also, he has a. He plays recycle man as like his. His nighttime gig where he plays music to kids about recycling, so, and he's, so he's very intimate with the county, he's been hired several times to do. Composting workshops in person and over Zoom.
Okay.
So I would contact him first and see if he's available, but he, he basically does my position for the Vancouver area.
So I'll follow up your question, Commissioner, the programs, the projects, she has a lot of discretion in. How she reaches these deliverables and how she puts those together, different events, different type of things. That's what she's working with Michelle is to make sure that uh. That they, checking up boxes that we get reimbursed for them and, and meet the goals established. The goals are fairly broad in the grant to give us a lot of latitude, longitude on those programs, but it's really McKenzie's. Opportunity to make it her own, working with the state, learning from the other folks in the other counties to do the same thing. In the fair, you want to talk about the fair, speaking of the fair?
Yeah, I was at the fair and um it wasn't crazy busy under the grandstands, but I, I definitely learned a lot to make it hopefully more successful next year. I think I was under the grandstand, so I think being outdoors next year, and I know in the past, they've, we partnered with Kiwanis Club, I guess, to do free snow cones and things. And so I didn't have any like gimmicks for the kids or really cool, I had stickers, but that wasn't very cool, I guess, so. Um just different things and I've been contacting somebody that does kind of. Things with logos and stuff, but it's all recyclable materials, because I don't want to put a lot of new plastic stuff out, because I think that's counterproductive, so.
And we'll also reengage the high school seniors typically come out and man the booths.
Say, I know they've had stainless steel straws in the past and here Kiwanis is folding it up, packing it in and.
Oh, okay.
So that might not work long term for you, but.
But having the seniors there, it's, in the past, it's been, then Republic makes a donation to the senior class, so we need to get that re, reengaged and. We'll be part of it next year, and she's working on the identity of the program, which you see she's got a shirt and, and on a table. Uh display and, and usually when you go to these things, like we've talked about when we did the employment fair, you know, having a certain amount of. Bling, I guess, or, or branding is, you know.
Where were you at in the building, by the way?
I was under the grandstands, they put me on the very end next to all the empty ones and so a lot of.
So were you on the side with the cafeteria or the side with the bathroom?
By Cafe Genovese, yeah.
So I didn't get down that far.
Oh, yeah, a lot of people.
Wonder why I never saw him, but that would make sense.
Yep.
Either that or I went in with food on the brand and didn't look around, so.
Yeah, I think it's a better choice to be outside.
Yeah, I think so. I know um people were saying that in the past, it kind of depends on the fair board, sometimes they try to focus under the grandstand, sometimes they try to focus outside. And this year it seemed like kind of the focus was outside, so.
My only contribution was to win, get blown over the bottle recycling thing, so. Keep those from blowing over. So she learned a lot, and I stopped by a couple of times and there was people there talking to her, so it's just getting establishing visibility. I think Joe had brought in some of the composting.
Yeah, I have the.
Recycle bins.
Recycle bins.
Compost bins, so.
See if anybody wanted to buy any.
We have some of those.
Anybody buy any?
No.
Would you like to buy?
Yeah, no take yours.
Anything else, any questions for the, you should be seeing this, the, it's already got approved as a form and so it should be on consent to be done maybe next week hopefully.
Yeah, I.
So. But I sent it to you, so it's the same one, but. Good to go once we get it approved, so. All right, then I'll kick it over to Joe on to talk about a few.
Yeah, I was just gonna go over, this summer's out there, um you guys know about the new oil fire, you know, they stopped it. They had a lot of their guys working a shift and then come in and stay all night and uh into the next day. We probably didn't know, that put them about a day, day and a half behind and cans started stacking up down in the intermodal and. So after a week, the following Sunday, they came in and worked and got caught back up. And then on uh August eighth, another fire broke out about three P M that was right by the entrance and started in the ditch. They don't really know if a uh intermodal or uh if the truck was dragging something or. Somebody threw something out or what, but luckily, you know, the uh Roosevelt chief was in the grader and he just ran over there and got a line around it and. Roosevelt was really quick to get up there, so they had, had got that out quick. Held it to about two football field size. Um the transfer stations, they had some recycling can shortages in. July and Dallasport and Beazee Corners, they were kind of having to turn people away. Because they were bringing all the cans they had up to Golden Dale so they could keep the route trucks, you know, emptying that. Um the, the new baccals haven't really worked out yet, one of them got out to Golden Dale and broke down the first day, so. Something major that's gonna take a while, and then the other one's getting the grapple rebuilt. So hopefully they get those out here pretty soon. Um the landfill, they're starting to go up on the, the new expansion, um. They're kind of gonna do it in sections, they got a lot of uh gas wells up there that they have to deal with, some of them they're gonna abandon, some of them they're gonna. Run out, they got a crew coming next month to run out, a bunch of them. Uh horizontally out to the edges and then they're gonna just start filling up on top and when they get done, they'll come back and drill new wells for some of them. Certain areas, so.
And for the public. Expansion's vertical.
Yep.
Footprint.
Yep. Right, yep, they're starting to go up on that, so. And then Zach, he ended up hiring another operations manager, um met him a couple of times, I believe his name was Greg. And sounds like he's gonna help take the load off of Zach, so. He can concentrate on some of the other things that need done, you know, trucking area, they're short on truck drivers, um. Zach, or yeah, Zach's gonna try to implement a C D L plan to get some of his guys to uh get trained and then, you know, they have to work there for a year or two or whatever to. Pay it off and make it worth the while, so. Other than that, it's been busy summer and things have been going well all the areas, so.
Questions? Thank you.
Yep.
Can you do it in ten minutes?
Thank you both.
Share my screen up there if that's okay. Be able to. Yeah, can, who's gonna call? Ghostbusters. Okay. So, uh this is, pardon me, that was all killers, okay. This is pretty much in response to a conversation I had with Commissioner Zoller a few weeks ago. And I wanted to share the information with, with everyone. Um so, so she said, she came in and she said that uh we wanted to focus a bit more on emergency services. So um the first, the first response is, I really need to find out where we are now. Because I think, I think the context was the fire and the disaster and the strain it put on I T resources for the whole situation. Yes, so, so I went into our um, our, our help desk system. And I started looking for key performance indicators, what exactly, um what, where exactly do we spend our time? Um so I worked these up and I think they're helpful. Um so average time to first response, and this is in business hours, so forty hours in a week. Um so the average time for the, throughout our entire system is five point seven hours. But with uh with emergency services and the sheriff's office, we're at six point, six hours and eleven minutes. Um a little bit higher, but we were, um we were having a staff meeting yesterday, we were talking to the, uh we were talking and, and Curtis brought up. He said, well, he said, if dispatch puts in a work order at ten o'clock at night, we're not gonna respond to it until eight o'clock in the morning unless we get a phone call. So, so that, you know, so that could help explain some of these, and same with the sheriff's office, you know, if, if they come in after hours. Um I personally, I would like to see these numbers below four hours. I think four hours is a good, is a good amount of time, you know, because unless you've got somebody sitting there staring, waiting for the next work order to come in. You know, you, you gotta give time for people to um to react, okay? Average time to resolution, um forty six hours, like I said, it's a forty hour week, uh forty six hours is not bad. Depending on the problem, if it's a simple problem, you know, we can take care of it right away. Uh same with the sheriff's office, uh that, or emergency management, um seventy three hours is a little bit long. I'd like to get everything down around forty hours, so um. You know, at, at the end of the day, if you can, if you can measure it, you can manage it. Now that we've started measuring this stuff, we can start focusing on it. One of the things that I did to help with emergency services is um. If someone from emergency services, either emergency service to the sheriff's office sends a um or creates a work order. Uh I, I put a rule in the system to automatically make it high priority. Um normally, the priority comes in medium unless, unless the user, unless the requestor um. Bumps it up to high themselves, but with the sheriff's office, it comes in at a high priority. So we're gonna, so the intent there is to, is to pay more attention to their work orders as they come in. I think to make this. Data valid and inconsistent is we're continuing to get people to, you know, you can call if it's an emergency, but the work order system is user friendly, it's easy to use. It it puts everything and so they instantly get it and things get prioritized, you know, on a real time basis, but if somebody stops by, knocks or calls. And it doesn't necessarily get logged and and they can uh, so we're really pushing folks to the, to the uh. Yes, yes. And and an example of that is yesterday, there was a call from one of the deputies that um, his monitor was going dim. Um, the technician, our technician that went over there and looked at it, he basically, he had the work done in twenty minutes. But because it was a phone call and and this is gonna be a learning curve on our part. Um, but because it was a phone call and not a a help desk ticket, um, it didn't get recorded. So I had a conversation with them, with them this morning and I said, I said, hey, from now on, you know, even if it is a fifteen minute job, record it. You know, and that way that's gonna give us more complete, more accurate information just forward. Um, the next thing to the right here is incidents by escalation level. So um, so there are six and and basically what that is, is is when a help desk ticket comes in. It comes in help desk one. That's basic. That's, that's simply um. Maybe you reset a password, maybe you have to swap out a um, a a U P S under somebody's desk. That's a help desk ticket one. And then from there it goes up, help desk ticket two is, or help desk two ticket is um. Is maybe you've gotta do some some troubleshooting on someone's, uh, you know, somebody's got a problem. Little bit more skill involved. Um, and then you go system admin, one is is um, basic. Basic sys admin type stuff, uh, routine maintenance on a server, things like that. Uh, sys admin two, instead of routine maintenance on a server, maybe you're troubleshooting a problem. With the server or a network application like Spillman or something like that. So you're you're, you're more involved, you're troubleshooting. Um, and then it goes to um, to to senior admin type position. Um, and that person is is more, that's more involved in, in in um. Maybe making system changes. You know, maybe a department comes and says, we wanna replace this application with this application, so. A a senior sys admin would would take something like that on. And then it goes up into the director level, which is basically. Um, saying that um, budget, things like that. But you know, we're a small team and and we share. Uh, jobs, there's, there's, we're not big enough to silo. So we share jobs. So so what it comes down to and it looks like here, uh, help desk one. Got this thing in front of me, I can't get it. Get it. Um, anyway, help desk one, we have, it looks like, uh, what is that, forty one percent of our, our work orders? Now, this is a work order count. This isn't how much time we spend on the work order. It's the number of workers we get. Okay, so forty one percent of our our work orders are help desk one. Okay, um, help desk two, we're at thirty one percent. Um. Uh, sys admin one, we are, I can't, I can't read, twenty four percent. And sys admin two. Now, I've only set this up a couple of weeks ago, so gosh. Anyway, so set. My mouse is not cooperating.
We only got five minutes. Uh, so on there, it says like your average time to first response is five hours and seventeen minutes.
Yes.
Uh, it says the previous record was fourteen hours longer than that. Is that because? Why is that the case? Was it the question? That is, that's a very good question. Why was it, why was it fourteen hours longer? Um, honestly, I set these up two or three weeks ago and we weren't paying attention to it. We didn't know, you know, like I said, if if you can measure, you can manage it. And up to that point, we weren't measuring it.
So also help us with the year end report is that they can go back, grant to this previous employers in the back, look at the type of. Calls we're getting, work tickets, um, you know, the level of uh, co- complexity. And it helps set the goals for the next year and.
And what I was, just to pinpoint for you, what I was specifically looking for was after hours support. Uh, for public safety and employee safety in the field to ensure that if they're out and something goes out at night. They have immediate support to get their computer back up or their phone back on.
To answer that, yes, um, I get calls sporadically i- i- in the middle of the night, um, you know. I've had phone calls at three o'clock in the morning since I've been in in the year that, since I've been here. Um, and uh, generally, and we have had conversations in amongst our staff and we have worked out a situation. Where um, where if I get the phone call, I will, I will relay that information to the um, to the person that's most likely. To be able to solve their problem. And that's been, that has been happening. Like I said, it's sporadic. Now that I say this, it's probably gonna happen. Shortly after, but it's been a couple of months since it's happened.
Somebody else had to knock on wood today.
Yeah, this is for Mike, I don't even. So um, so yes, yes, we do do that. Um. Uh, but could we be be better? Absolutely. This allows us an opportunity to start measuring it and start managing it to get better. And there has been a previous discussion with the previous board about more I T support for dispatch. We we basically do minimal stuff for them and they have a lot of I T support from their other vendors. Um, but that was gonna be involved hiring a person to be shared between the two departments. This, this is a bit off script, but now that you, I got two minutes. This is a bit off script, but um. I did have a conversation with uh, with Jeff King at la- it was late last week, I think. And um, there was, there's, they have a a grant for a cybersecurity audit. And he sent me an email um, after our conversation, giving me. Uh, making me the project manager for that specific project, um, which which kind of takes that off of their plate. So we have started down that, down that path. And I get along, we, you know, we get along really well with uh, emergency management. So yes, we're, we're making efforts. To um, to improve their support. Um, also, this is more informational than anything. Um, one minute, okay. All right, well, um, this is more informational than anything. This shows us where uh, where our efforts have been spent. That this information is, like I said, I only did this a few weeks ago, so we're still, we're still. Cleaning out the old stuff. We had, looks like fifteen that um, that the department was not set. I fixed that problem by making the department field a required field. Um, our weed control seems like an awful lot of uh, seems like an awful lot of work orders for one and a half people. The reason that is, is because the person that is shared between weed control and um, and H R. Most of the work order she sends in comes from H R, but she was identified in the system as being in weed control. So so we fixed that. Um. Incidents over time.
We're gonna have to cut you off.
Okay.
It's eleven o'clock.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
I'll be scheduled more time if you need it.
All right.
Could you send this to us?
Uh, yeah, I'll have to figure out how to get it out of the um, out of the system, but yes, I can.
Thank you.
Send that to you.
Uh, next up, we have prosecutor attorney Dave Canal. Do you have anything for open sessions, sir? How much time in the executive do you want?
Fifteen minutes.
Hey. Uh, with that, we'll be going into executive session in accordance with R C W forty two dot three zero dot one one zero print. One print I to discuss threatening or pending litigation for fifteen minutes. Uh, which means we'll be back at eleven sixteen.